I'm in Buena Vista. Can I have a roll call, please?
I'm here. I'm just balancing back and forth, kind of like Phillip said about his one screen. So please be patient with me. Mayor Lacy?
Here.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yeah.
Trustee Fay?
Yeah.
Trustee Nyberg? Trustee Rowe?
Here.
Trustee Swisher?
Yeah.
Trustee Wobey? Trustee Nyberg? And Trustee Wobey?
Did we lose him, Phillip?
Getting him in.
I just promoted him.
There we go. Ah ha!
There you are. Thank you, Dave.
So it looks like Norm?
Correct.
All right.
So we do have a quorum. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much, and let the record show that Trustee Nyberg is joining the meeting currently. Next on the agenda is a proclamation. This proclamation is Youth Appreciation Week. Whereas the vast majority of the youth are concerned, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens, and whereas the accomplishments and achievements of the young citizens deserve recognition and praise of their elders, and whereas Optimus International has since 1956 developed and promoted a program entitled Youth Appreciation Week, and whereas the citizens of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, have indicated a desire to join with the Optimum, i.e. Buena Vista Optimist Club, and express an appreciation and approval of the contributions of the youth. Now therefore, I, Duff Lacy, Mayor of the town of Buena Vista, do hereby proclaim the week of February 1st through February 5th, 2021 as Youth Appreciation Week. In the town of Buena Vista, by this action, let it be known that we have faith in the ability of today's youth as they assume responsible roles in the future of mankind, humankind, I'm sorry, given under this hand, under my hand, the seal of the town of Buena Vista on the 26th day of January 2021. Next on the agenda is the Agenda Adoption. And we have a addition, if so approved by the trustees. It would be an executive session that we will add at the end of the meeting, and it is an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Paragraph 4, Subparagraph E concerning the acquisition of water rights. Are there any other comments, questions, additions to the agenda? I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
I'll second that.
Second, Fay, further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Wobey?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all very much. Next item is Consent Agenda. Are there questions, comments on Consent Agenda?
Thank you to all the Airport and Water Advisory Board members for the work they do. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Second, Wobey, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Next item is public comment. And I will open this portion of the meeting to public comment. I have I have one listed, Alan Robinson. Alan, would you like to speak now or would you like to wait until before the discussion?
Can you, are you hearing me, Mayor?
Yes, sure.
If that discussion you're referring to will give more details on this issue of the letter of support for a bridge, then yes, I would prefer to wait. But if there isn't to be no further details or discussion, then I would go ahead and make my comment now.
I believe there will be discussion, as the trustees have not discussed it prior to this. So there will be some comments given at that point in time. I'm not sure just how much more information will be divulged other than what's in the packet, maybe some clarifying questions. But if you would like to wait until then, obviously that's later in the meeting, but if you wanted to speak now rather than waiting, that's fine.
Unfortunately, I'm not aware of the material in the packet, and that's my error. But I just, yes, I will. If you so approve, I'll make a couple of comments now.
That'll be fine. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Alan Robinson, 33700 Mount Harvard Circle, Buena Vista, Colorado. I wanted to give first a little context that some of you might not be aware of, but on the order of eight or 10 years ago, I collaborated with Katie Selby in developing a grant application which would have dealt with additional trails, both on the west and the east shore, including the Whipple Trail System. And as a part of that, there was a proposal to provide a bridge somewhere in the stretch between the current bridge and and the existing private bridge to the south. This took place approximately the time that the South Main Project was very graciously negotiating with the town of Buena Vista to I'm not sure I have all my details correctly, but the end result was that a piece of the riverfront of the South Main Project was transferred to the town of Buena Vista. Frankly, this particular grant application didn't, was not successful for reasons I can't immediately recall. But at that time, there was no option to be using the private bridge to the south. So that it did seem to make considerable sense at that time to propose a bridge. As you of course well know, the private landowner of that bridge has made that available for public use. And so that essentially has allowed a number of initiatives to go forward, which has expanded the Whipple Trail System, and I think contributed quite a bit to its popularity and increased use. One thing which I know was of concern both 10 years ago and certainly is today is for how long that public bridge would in fact remain open to the public. I have no reason to believe there's any reason that it would not be continued that way for some time, but it is a private bridge. So I guess I would suggest, as you further discuss this issue, you ask yourselves whether or not there's a permanent solution there by using a private bridge. If, I'm not sure that I would have the opportunity later, but it seems to me that an option, if you're considering some long-term solutions to access across the river, that the town might actually consider the possibility of purchasing that particular private bridge. I have, again, no reason to believe that the owner is interested in doing so, and I wouldn't be speaking on his behalf. But it is a separate small parcel, which is separate from his larger residential property on the east bank. So perhaps that's an option that the trustees might want to consider. I think that's really all I have to say at this time, and I'll try to pay attention to further discussion, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you for your comments. Next would be Sarah. I believe we have you signed on as a public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you state your name and address, please, Sarah?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and trustees. I'm Sarah Cassidy, and I am the community liaison for Colorado Midland and Pacific Railway Company. My address is 2517 Gray Street in Edgewater, Colorado. I'm here tonight just for the purpose of introductions, and I appreciate the time to do this now during public comment. Colorado Midland and Pacific has entered into a commercial agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for the majority of the Tennessee Pass Railline, which is owned by Union Pacific. CMP has filed for common carrier authority to operate the Tennessee Pass Railline with the U.S. Surface Transportation Board. That's the entity that regulates railroads. So just by way of introduction, CMP is a wholly owned subsidiary of Rio Grande Pacific Corporation, and that company owns or operates freight and passenger railroads in multiple states, including the DCTA commuter rail A train between Denton and Carrollton, Texas. I'm here tonight just to make sure that you know how to reach me and that I know how to hear from you, knowing that your community will have, will be impacted by the Tennessee Pass Railline, and we want to seek your feedback. Our next steps in our process are to listen and learn to begin the assessment of local community needs and interest in possible commuter rail service. We know that there are a number of residential areas and workplaces between not only Chaffey County, but also Eagle Lake and Fremont Counties, which is the the distance of the line for which we have an agreement. We look forward to engaging in the transportation planning work that's already underway in that area to determine how, if and how Tennessee Pass might play a role. We already appreciate, already understand and appreciate that there's a number of state and local transit agency efforts underway and in progress. And so we also want to say that we look forward to working with those efforts to evaluate the feasibility of rail service in the area. If there's a need and desire for state or for this type of partnership for commuter rail and a passenger type of service, CMP will assist public agencies in obtaining funding to establish passenger rail services. There will be quite a bit of track and other infrastructure that will require rehabilitation before any service can begin. We also intend to explore commercial opportunities. That's development of freight services along the Tennessee Pass Railline. There has been some false information reported about CMP's interest in the corridor and our parent company's interest in the corridor. And so I just want to address and confirm that our plan is to work with communities to determine if there are commuter and local freight service needs that can be met with the rail line. And to be really clear and specific, Colorado Midland and Pacific has no plan or intention, and really no means to connect or operate oil trains from across outside of the Tennessee Pass Line for which we have an agreement. CMP has an agreement just for a portion of the Tennessee Pass Line, and that's 160-mile corridor that goes roughly from Sage, Colorado, which is east of, I'm sorry, west of Eagle, near the Eagle County Airport, to Parkdale, Colorado, which is just west of Canyon City. I mean, it is within that corridor that we are seeking to develop opportunities or determine if there are opportunities to develop. And we want to do that in coordination and in consultation with the communities along the line and the planning agencies in the area. So any speculation scenarios that have been out there about oil or other commodities that we intend to move on the Tennessee Pass is just simply false rumor. And I want to address that and make sure you know that CMP has no plan whatsoever to operate oil trains over the Tennessee Pass. In fact, today CMP filed a formal filing with the Surface Transportation Board to verify our intended plans and reject false characterization of our plans. I'm glad to be in contact. I appreciate the time on the agenda, recognizing me during public comment for tonight. I look forward to your input and working together going forward, and I hope this can be the beginning of a conversation about the Tennessee Pass Railline along with, as CMP develops its plans. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much, Sarah. I did give you a little leeway on time, and we do appreciate you being here. Timing is perfect, actually. So appreciate it. We, you know, I hate to say it, but I hope we don't have to get in touch. But thank you for coming in tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I'm looking for anybody else to and I guess I didn't clarify too much about how to go on. I am not seeing anything else, Phillip.
I have not either. Mike, do you see anything?
No. If you wanted to remind everyone, was it star six to raise your hand?
Believe that is to mute and unmute if somebody's on the phone.
Star nine, then?
Yeah, star nine to raise your hand, or if you're on the Zoom, you can use the chat function.
Yep. On the control panel, you can use the raise hand, or you may email, actually. I am not seeing anything, so I think we'll move on.
I just, we have one hand raised now.
Find one? Good.
Bridget Blomfield.
Okay, if you would like to state your name and address, and you have three minutes, so go right ahead.
Oh, my name is Bridget Blomfield. My address is 6800 West Floyd Avenue in Lakewood, Colorado. And I am one of the landowners on Block 21. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I don't think you can see me. I don't see myself on the screen.
Thank you very much. And this is pertaining to, am I correct, the alleyway that we're going to discuss?
Yes.
Do you have any comments that you would like to make, Bridget, or just?
No, thank you. I'm just touching base and want to listen to what you guys have in mind and what's happening moving forward.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
I don't see anything else. So I'll do this again, and maybe somebody will raise their hand. We will call the end of, this is the end of public comment. So we'll move on to business items. We will receive an update. From the Farm Development, Antley Fowler will provide the trustees with an update on activities at the farm subdivision.
Mayor, if I may, introduce it real quick?
Yes.
So yes, Antley's joined us tonight. We, if, for those that may not remember or weren't part of it, town, the developer for the farm subdivision and the town worked pretty hard back in 2016, 2017 to get this development up and going with the hope and vision that we would get some much-needed attainable housing from the private sector. And as they're wrapping up Phase 1 and looking to move into Phase 2, we felt like it was a good opportunity to kind of circle back and just hear how things are going for their development. And, you know, certainly the board can ask questions and whatnot, but just a good moment to pause and just look and see how things are moving along, since this was a pretty exciting project and has turned out some really great results. So thank you, Antley, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. Can you hear me okay?
You bet.
All right. Well, first, I want to thank you for approving the farm in the first place. I was actually living in Florida at the time, and Charlie was calling me and keeping me informed on all that was going on, and I had no idea that a few years later I would be actually living in the farm and working in the farm. And it's just been a great blessing, not only to myself, but to a number of people. We are wrapping up on Phase 1. We have about seven lots left now. We have, since we broke, well, the first home sale was in 2018, and now in 2021, we have 83 homes that are sold or under contract. And last year was a big year for us. We sold about 36 homes, which was a big jump from 22 the year before. And so we've been able to kind of dial in that process. We brought some really sharp folks on staff, especially in that area of construction, to help move us along in that area. And it's been really fun. We have a number of, a big variety of folks that live out there. You know, the original goal of the farm as it started was to provide housing for folks that live here in Chaffey County and haven't been able to afford homes. And we have, I think, 11 first responders. We have correction officers, bus drivers, teachers, grocery store workers, bank tellers, physical therapists, people who are retired. A lot of folks between the age of 25 and 35 who work from their home. People who work for the city and the town. And so it's just been a great experience. And we've just seen everything that the farm, we were desiring for the farm to do, it seems like it has been doing that. It's, as we're looking at other projects in other towns, everybody comes and looks at the farm, and they just love it. Developers, investors, town planners from other areas, and it's just been great to see the farm actually fulfill the purpose that Charlie and the town wanted it to fulfill. It's just been great, especially with, just recently with COVID, when that hit, a number of our first responders, we said, we have a newsletter that goes out every month, and the first responders just, they contacted us and said, if there's any folks that are high-risk or they need help, we'd be glad to help them. And so we've become a little community, and it's been, it's just been a great, a great journey. We have, just as we kind of are moving forward, one of the things that we want, we wanted to make sure of is to kind of safeguard our townhomes to make sure that local residents would be able to move into those, and we reserve our bigger houses for second homeowners. And as we're kind of winding down in Phase 1, we are happy that 84% of the folks that live in the farm are primary residents. And as you know, I think we don't allow any short-term rentals, VRBOs, or Airbnbs, just with the desire to make sure that we are building community, just not moving people in homes. And so one of the things we're excited about in Phase 2 is we have decided to reserve 100% of our townhomes, not just the tailors, for primary residents only. And so in Phase 2 of the 51 units, 40 of them will be reserved for primary residents only. And we're continuing to give a $2,500 discount to correctional officers, military, police officers, first responders. And in some of the bigger homes, the premium lots that we use to subsidize our smaller lots, we're allowing a $10,000 discount for those lots for people who are local and want to move into those. And so we're trying to stay on course and fulfill the mission of Fading West that we communicated to you a number of years ago. And that is to help folks live near their families, not have to commute so far, and be a part of the community. And so, yeah, that's just been a great journey, and we're super excited about all that's happening and that all is in store. And so, yeah, so that's about it. Love to answer any questions that you have. If you have any.
Trustees, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Libby.
I was just wondering on, how is your manufacturing facility coming along? When do you expect to be able to have that produce houses? Because I'm really excited about all that you've done so far.
Yes, ma'am. It has been, we have begun that process. If you look over by the airport, you can see some big steel beams that we've erected, one side of the factory, and some steel beam up top. Our schedule, what we're desiring is to get our first houses out at the end of this year. And so we are starting to hire people. We're in the process of hiring about 53 people, which will build our staff. This time next year will be around 70-plus employees, which we're excited about also. And the farm Phase 2 is one of the places that we're probably going to need to have folks stay. So we're glad that Phase 2 is coming online at the time that it is. And, you know, we're starting to take lot reservations even in, like a waiting list for Phase 2 of people that are interested. But the factory is moving along. It should be done by November, and the first house is out at the end of the year.
Thank you. That's really exciting.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a question, comment? Thank you, Antley, and I do want to make a comment. There was, it's been quite a few years now. I guess, and probably not as many as I think, that the numbers that we were, that were indicated that we needed to fulfill the needed housing, and I hear your numbers, and it just, it just makes me feel good that we are, we're not ahead by any means, but we're making progress.
Yep.
And it just feels real good knowing that the effort is being put forward, and it's being taken advantage of, and it's working.
Yep.
That, so it's just real good, real good for the area, and especially really good for the town. So I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Antley. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Next item on the agenda is an update on potential issues and comment period for the Surface Transportation Board draft environmental impact statement related to the Tennessee Pass Railline. And Phillip, do you want to lead into this one?
Yeah, very briefly, because I don't want to, I don't want to mess it up. There's, there's people here that know more about this than I do. But, yeah, I think as was indicated at a previous meeting, you know, I know the the news articles have come out, and a lot of people in our community are aware to some degree of discussions and things about the rail line coming through town. And so what I told the board last meeting is one of the things that we'd be doing is working closely with our county commissioners and leadership there, because you know, I think there's, there's resources to be, you know, to be shared and and knowledge and just leverage on how we work with the people we need to work with as this progresses. So for tonight, Commissioner Keith Baker has joined us to fill us in on what the county is looking at doing and doing in the next few days, I believe, and allow you all to ask questions, get some, you know, clarity around that. And then I think there's an opportunity for town to possibly join in as a signer on some of that. So before I mess it all up, I'll turn it over to Keith Baker, Commissioner.
Hey, thank you, Phillip. Thanks, Mayor, and thanks trustees and everyone else in attendance tonight. And I'm happy that Sarah is here, and I'm also happy that the Colorado Midland and Pacific Railway filed a statement with the Service Transportation Board today to provide some assurance that they are not intending to ship oil via long trains of tanker cars down the Arkansas River Valley. So that's, that's very helpful. I circulated a document, or provided it to Phillip, I think he circulated it to you today, that's a little bit different than that narrow issue of oil coming down. uh, that's a little bit different than that narrow issue of oil coming down the Arkansas River Valley, but it does pertain to it. What this is about, uh, the document that you've seen, if you look at it, uh, at the beginning, it's pretty clear that it's being filed to protest the draft environmental impact statement for the proposed rail line in the Uinta Basin in northeastern Utah. So this doesn't really have anything to do directly with our Tennessee Pass line here, nor does it have anything to do directly with the Colorado Midland and Pacific. But it's kind of the crux of the matter is in that introductory material. It says, uh, the thresholds for examination are, if a prudent person could foresee that this action, i.e. building that railway, might have an impact further down the line or further on in time. And I think it's pretty clear that that railway could have an impact on whatever happens with the Tennessee Pass line, if it is reactivated. So that's what this document is doing, is it's asking the Surface Transportation Board and any other parties that have the power and the authority to revisit that draft environmental impact statement in view of this development. Because you'll see also in there that the, uh, draft environmental impact statement was issued in October of 2020. The agreement between the CMP and the Union Pacific was announced and, uh, I guess formalized on the thirty-first of December or New Year's Eve. So, uh, you know, times change or ti- time passes and things change. So it's the position of the coalition that we're working in that this needs to be revisited. We're not saying, and it's not our position, that the rail line should never, ever be reactivated for anything, for any reason. We're just saying that, uh, we need to make sure that we've done a very thorough analysis of the potential environmental impacts. There are other products that can come out of the Uinta Basin there, which are enumerated in the, uh, memorandum there or the filing, the potential filing. And, um, uh, those need to be analyzed as well. And then the finer points that it, that it hangs on are all listed in there in bold type, uh, with sub paragraphs addressing each one about potential impacts to air quality, uh, regulatory thresholds for traffic volume and impact at grade crossings and all those different criteria. And I know that members of the public are concerned about not just the environmental impacts, uh, of the air and the water, which those are certainly to be considered, but the grade crossings. Trains have been getting longer over the past few years. And they probably wouldn't be as long on this line because we know historically it was subject to derailments up around Tennessee Pass with the severe grades and the tight turns and things up there. But still, it could be longer. There could be some doubling up done or something with the sightings up by the numbers. And we could have very long trains coming on down through the valley. And, uh, consequently, we could have all three of the grade crossings here in town blocked at, at one time or another. So I know people are, are understandably concerned about that possibility happening. And, um, that's really about it. Now, what Philip was saying, uh, the town and the city of Salida, just as individual citizens are able to, uh, make their own comments if you'd like. What I thought would be a good idea is because you're all very busy, uh, we're all very busy, is to funnel your comments and to the extent possible, funnel your inputs through the county. And we could make the comment with the town of Unavista as a signatory. Uh, I was on the phone with Philip a few days ago and we kind of went through all the possible permutations of that. You could, um, come up with your own statement and say, no, we don't want to sign on with this one. We want to do our own. You could not do anything at all. Uh, or we could, uh, possibly take this one as a basis for doing, uh, doing our own and the county and the city of Salida and the town of Unavista do one just for us. But, uh, we're participating with a group consisting of Eagle County and primarily up there, the, the lead municipality is Avon. And, uh, Lake County, not real clear on how involved Leadville is on that. But, um, but I know that Lake County is participating. And then all the other groups like Friends of Brown's Canyon, Three Fifty Central Colorado, uh, any of those others are working independently on their own. They probably are coordinating amongst themselves to a certain extent, but, uh, we're not, we're not being their voice. We're certainly listening to them and listening to their concerns as would the concerns of any citizen. But, uh, we're not, we're not their conduit. So with that, I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, questions, comments?
Um, I have a couple of comments. Um, there are, there are several people out there that would be interested in seeing the railroad come through town again. And it could provide, transportation for people to go to work. It definitely could affect tourism. A train ride through Brown's Canyon would be very beautiful. It does have pluses to it. I don't think it's all negative. And one of the pluses would be to have, um, the five-foot tall weeds and the trees growing up through the railroad tracks removed, because that's not very attractive for our community either. Depending on the length that the trains, I really do not believe that that would be such a harmful impact on the town. Um, there's pluses both sides. Uh, making sure that it, that our environment is protected. Yes, that is important because that's what draws people to our valley. But there are enough people out there that are not able to do the Midland trails and hike up Cottonwood and do whatever. And, uh, a sitting train ride through our beautiful country would be very nice for them. Though I think in some points it would draw some tourism.
Thank you, Cindy. Libby, you have something?
Yeah, um, I, I am concerned about the, the effect on traffic. And, um, specifically, I was wondering, is there discussion about having an underpass on Arkansas? Um, so that, you know, cars could go under the tracks and not be blocked off at all three intersections at once with major, uh, stacking out on the highway? And I'm just wondering about that.
And of course, obviously, I, I don't think anybody at this point has a comment to that. That's, that's ways down the road. I can only speak to when the train was running early when, when we moved here. And obviously the concern now, and that's what I'm hearing, is the length of the trains. Um, it was not, and I think Cindy, Norm, you know, we all remember, uh, they weren't great big long trains and they passed through pretty quick, even though they weren't high speed. But, uh, it wasn't much of a detriment. Now, obviously, if we start talking double the length of a train, that'd be interesting. That, that really could be interesting. So I think that's, I think that's the question. And I think that's where you're coming from, Libby, is we really, I think at this point, we don't know how long they're gonna be. And that's what Keith's saying, uh, what could happen. It's, it's interesting. It's just interesting. It's wide open.
It just seems like it could, it could affect our ability to respond, um, to a fire or a medical emergency. Um, schools could be, um, impacted by their children not being able to arrive for school. And I know it would be very expensive to put in an underpass. But, um, I don't know if I dreamed that or if there is actually discussion of it.
We've, we've never planned for that, uh, trustee Fay, but obviously was something that could have this, uh, significant of an impact. It forces us to start looking at that once we find out more detail, which we don't have much of right now. So, um, one of the benefits of, of getting connected with Sarah, um, at this point, so.
Yeah. Can I respond, uh, a bit there, Duff?
You bet. Go right ahead, Keith.
Okay, uh, first Cindy, you raised some excellent points. And these are actually some that a number of us have considered here in the county. Quite often people thought we were ready for an asylum or something when we did, but, uh, I've often said I would love to see some sort of light passenger service on the rail line. And there's one reason I've really been opposed to just out and out ripping it out, because I've never been anywhere that allowed a railway to be ripped out that they didn't regret it almost immediately. And, um, there's a system, they're called railcars and they have different flavors. And Sarah was on a call where we talked about this the other day. They're small, they're compact, they're self-contained, uh, they're relatively quiet. And they aren't very long. They're just really light rail. The problem, of course, is can somebody make money off of it? And for a long time, what happened in the U.S. was freight underrode passenger traffic until it finally with air traffic, uh, or an airline service getting to be what it was. Nobody wanted to take a train from New York to Los Angeles anymore when you could fly for a lot cheaper. So long-range rail died. I think short-range rail and regional rail does have some potential, but I'm not, I'm not a real business person, but, uh, I agree with you a hundred percent. And when I say, when I think tourist train or commuter train, that's what I think, something like you would see in Switzerland or northern Italy or Austria or Germany or somewhere in the Alps. Not a Durango to Silverton tourist train or a Chama tourist train. There, there are plenty of those. But let's have something that's both good for our residents and good for tourists. Uh, just like you said, my parents would never go down Brown's Canyon in a raft. But they'd take a train. And I think that's true for a lot of people. And it would be, I mean, just think about how nice it would be to go to Salida in a train. You could read while you're going, you'd get some work done and, uh, do whatever you needed to do there and come back. Or you could go down and have dinner and have that extra glass of wine, not worried about, not worry about being a hazard to others and yourself and perhaps take the train back. But that would be, um, you know, that's the kind of thing that would really have to be worked at. And, uh, the finance people would have to see some upside in it to do it. But I, I agree with you. There's some, there's some real potential there. That's why I said, I said at the outset, we're not saying no way, no how, never. We're just wanting to be very, very careful about, uh, if oil comes out of northeastern Utah and goes down the valley. And Sarah, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not running this meeting, Duff.
That's all right, Keith. Go ahead. No, you're.
I just wonder if Sarah wanted to come in there.
Well, um, thanks Commissioner and Mayor, if you'll allow, um, I can, I can respond to a couple of things. First, I appreciate the feedback and I'm capturing, um, a lot of the comments are here. And I, I'm with the commissioner. I don't necessarily think that, um, there's a mutual exclusivity with having concerns about certain types of freight or what runs down the canyon and also wanting to be open to explore opportunities. So I, I'm glad that, to hear that, you know, there's, um, a space for that. Um, in regard to crossings, we are early in the process and so we don't have any specifics about what cross, what the crossing impacts would be. But I, I do understand that there's a concern about, um, potentially, um, having blocked crossings, depending on the length of trains. And I've heard an interest in a potential grade separation possibly. You know, all of that is good feedback and good information for us to consider as we look at the corridor, as we look at where the crossings are and how many would be impacted if we were running different types of, um, scenarios. So, um, I appreciate the comments. I don't have anything specific about crossings. But I would say that everything that's been suggested here is, is, is what we're thinking about. And we've already heard from, um, people talking about how to marry, um, tourism and commuter line, but also, um, recreation, knowing, identifying that this is, um, a corridor that is heavily trafficked for recreation purposes. And so potentially looking at the hiker, biker, rafter, um, traffic and making sure that what we're talking about is complimentary there as well. I don't have anything new to add other than, um, when Commissioner Baker talked about light, uh, passenger, um, units. Uh, we do have a, an example of the type of commuter train that the company runs on its Texas commuter line. And I'd be happy to include a link in the chat if people want to see what that looks like. Um, I don't want to overcommit that that's something that we know would work in this corridor, but that's just an example of what the company's other passenger and commuter operations look like. So I'm gonna go ahead and include that. And, you know, I, I do hope that we continue to get your input to shape this. So thanks for the extra time.
Thank you, Sarah.
I, uh, I appreciate that, Sarah. And what I really value in all this, if nothing else, it's really heightened the level of the conversation about it. Every time that I've had an opportunity to bring up the Tennessee Pass line with CDOT and said, listen, I know that we're probably not, we're not talking ten years, fifteen years. I don't know when in the future, but someday I think we'll want this. And who knows what we'll have when that happens. Solar-powered electric drive or something. We never know, but somewhere at CDOT headquarters, I hope there's a file in a drawer that says Tennessee Pass line, future use or something like that. And we continue to make that point. So we've got the conversation here. We've got it started. And we've got a broader perspective from the community that's starting to, uh, share their thoughts and ideas and everything. So I don't know, is it gonna happen in ten years, fifteen years? How many rooftops does it take? I heard, um, somebody say the other day that before you even begin to look at going from buses, fixed line bus service, fixed scheduled bus service to trains, you need to have, I forget, it was something like four buses an hour through that corridor. Well, we don't have that kind of fixed route bus service here, but who knows what might happen? You know, that, that, uh, transportation is changing so dramatically and so rapidly. It could happen before any of us, uh, foresee it. I put a link to a Wikipedia article about railcars in the chat. And once you get there, uh, you go down to the bottom and there are the links and there's hyperlinks in the text and references and stuff. So you can see what some of those are. That's what I've always kind of pictured in my mind as being suitable for here. And then, um, we'll see what Sarah has as well.
Thank you, Keith. Um, you know, and, and obviously, before we, we go too far off here and we're, we're a little bit off subject, a little bit, we're making some comments, but I would like to get back to the gist of what the conversation is about the sign-on with the, the county, if that's what we want to do with the environmental, um, uh, relooking at that. I mean, I, that's the question I will now present to the board. What is, what are your thoughts in that respect? Are we, uh, go ahead, Amy.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so yes, I think it's really exciting, all the train stuff. But of course, early in this process, we need to look at due diligence. And it seems like a good step would be to partner with the county in submitting comment on the draft environmental impact statement, maybe a good step for that. So I would be in support. It seems reasonable and I'd like to partner with the county and I look forward to hearing more about the train.
Thank you, Amy. Um, and then that's the direction we need to head at this point in time. Obviously, we're very early in the game. Um, I'm, I'm gonna say that probably nobody here, I don't know, maybe Jeff, but nobody here can make these answers that we're looking for right at the moment. So.
Would you like a motion or?
Amy, I would appreciate if you would put that into a motion.
Okay. Um, would, uh, Philip, does this need to be instruct mayor to sign a letter? Or can I just make a motion? Does it have to be a letter or the mayor signing anything?
Um, I think you can make a motion for the mayor to sign on with the comment being submitted, uh, through the, that'd be great.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion to instruct mayor. I make a motion to instruct Mayor to join with Chaffee County in submitting comment on the draft environmental impact statement for the Basin Railway, Unitah Basin Railway.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Libby. Further discussion?
What is the thing that we're having you sign?
Basically, what we're requesting, Devin, is where, there was a study done on the environmental impact and actually from what I gather, it was done previously. And what we're wanting to do is to either have that redone again, or at least re-looked at to make sure that everything, I, I guess, lack a better way to put it for me, eyes are dotted, t's are crossed, make sure that that impact has been done properly. Is that correct, Keith?
Yes, just to have it updated in view of this development that it, that traffic coming off of that rail line could be, could be coming down the Tennessee Pass Line.
Does that answer your question, Devin?
Yeah, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee X Stein? Trustee X Stein? Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Row?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Trustee X Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Keith, for coming in and thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you all. Have a great evening, we'll keep you posted.
All righty, take care.
Is anyone having trouble with their audio or is that? Is it just me?
I think that was just Paula at the time. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the Parkdale Bridge. The board will consider requests for a letter of support for South Main to acquire the Parkdale Bridge that could span from South Main Square east across the Arkansas River. That is on page 23 of the packet. Joel, are you leading this one off? I saw you came on live. No.
Happy to do that, of course. So this is simply a letter, just to frame it a little bit, a little bit more than what I did in the memo. You guys remember that South Main is part of their public or subdivision improvement agreement or public improvement agreement, part of their PUD. They're going to put a bridge across from essentially the South Main Square, kind of by the, the little living room area that goes across and connects to trails on the BLM portion. And so, so that's going to happen at some point in the future. Well, this bridge came up as an opportunity. It's down in Parkdale, it's a single lane driving bridge. And they, they put out, hey, if anyone wants this bridge, you know, give us some details and we'll pick a winner, if you will, but you can have this bridge for free. So the, so Jed Selby is requesting a letter of support. He's decided, well, heck, maybe this, you know, this actually could be a good bridge, he says, for crossing, making that crossing. And it's a free bridge as opposed to paying for the bridge. So he said, would you guys support this letter of this letter to try and have him get the bridge? There are no details at this point of how to attach it and how to, what the BLM negotiations would do. Jed would have to do all that and have to pay for it, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what it is. If, if he asks, hey, can we have a letter? And we said, we'll ask the trustees. So I turn that over to, to you all trustees, if you want to consider this letter of support or not, or however you want to do it.
Real quick, Joel, will you just add in the, it's in the memo, I apologize, but the due, the due date for the submission?
I believe he, he want, he needs to buy, by, well, he would like it in hand tomorrow, you know, and then which if we can change it, we have that time, but Deff would have to sign it tomorrow and then he submits it, I think by Friday, so. Is the due date.
Okay, thank you guys very much. Thank you, Joel, because you clarified one of the questions I had and that was basically the extended process, so say the agreement with BLM, all, how all of that would go and how that would impact town. And obviously, I know that would still be open for discussion at some point, but that was my biggest concern was just how much impact would that or could that possibly have on our CIP, just saying. Thank you. Trustees, questions, comments?
I'll start if I may.
Right ahead.
We, bottom line is, we're going to need access. The, the, the bridge, the private bridge that we have access across right now is great, but it is not guaranteed. I, I firmly believe that we need to find a permanent solution to accessing beyond the Whipple Bridge, the east side of the river. This seems to be a great option. I've seen pictures of it, it's not very attractive in its current state, but I would imagine that Jed would be able to do something with the, 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 to spruce it up and make it look attractive and, and match the rest of what he's building in South Main. So I, I, I see very little downside to it. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Dave. Other comments? Go ahead, Libby. You're muted, Libby.
In looking at this, we don't know whether there's been any consideration given to other bridges such as trying to buy Kristoff's Bridge, the one on Ram Sauer, or lease it in a long-term fashion. And I don't personally have any idea what it would cost for somebody to build a bridge like the Whipple Bridge. I've no idea what that cost, you know, when it was built or what it would cost today. I'm hearing from people that they don't like the Parkdale Bridge. They think it's ugly and, you know, but they also have some concerns about the abutments to it. How's it going to handle the high water when it comes through in this, in the spring and summer? I'm assuming that there'd be a lot of engineering work that needs to be done before, before Jed would consider putting up, you know, putting this bridge in place. Anyway, I am hearing from people saying they just don't like that park of bridge.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Other comments?
Just real quick, if I may, Deff, I mean, I can't comment on people's aesthetic preference. But I can comment on the, the location of the bridge would be up above, like from South Main Square going across. So, I mean, you would need a water event that would come all the way up above the lower trail and then all the way up again, another, it would, it'd be kind of ice, ice ageic water, water event.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think to comment on that, Joel, you're talking something like even the Whipple Bridge, everything would go.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially. That'd be that 100 year that we always talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe even more, huh? Anybody else have a comment? Go ahead.
I have a comment. I am sure that if they are the winner of the Parkdale Bridge and whatever, when it is put up, it will involve much engineering and I'm sure it will be safe when it is done because I'm sure there will be a lot of permits involved and I don't think we have to worry about the bridge being unsafe. And I, I have no objection to it.
Thank you, Cindy. And, and I agree with, and then Dave brought this up and so did Joel, Libby touched on it, the aesthetics of the bridge. Obviously, what you're seeing today is very highly possible, not what you're going to see tomorrow. You know, when it gets moved and things are all said and done, I, I can't imagine we're going to have a stick bridge across the river. I mean, it's just, it's not going to be the same, best way for me to put it. The other thing, Libby, and, and obviously, we're talking dollars and cents. Either way, whether you, you build it, buy it, this one is free of charge. You're going to have, he's going to have to move it, he's going to have to do everything, that's his expense to build a bridge, and I know we've discussed this very minimally, but we've talked about one that goes across, I believe. Is it, it's not pleasant, what street is it?
Well, we, we have one in our projects right now going over Cottonwood Creek, just a pedestrian bridge at Marquette in Arizona. And that project's now getting up into the $700,000 range. It includes more than just the bridge, but it's, it's quite a process.
Yeah, and, and, and so therefore the dollars and cents part of it, obviously there's going to be more, but the bridge being little or no expense fabricated, that makes a big difference also. There again, I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to give comments to your questions, Libby, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and is this a cost for South Main or is it a cost for the town?
That is kind of the clarification that I believe Joel gave is this is a South Main project. Now, there may be a time where obviously Jed may ask for some kind of assistance and, and I guess first and foremost, it would be a note, a letter of support, no different than this one, going to BLM or something like that for getting access across the river, that kind of thing. But dollars and cents wise, at this point, nothing to the town.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion if no one else had any other comments.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this letter in support of the Parkdale Bridge acquisition.
I would second the motion.
Second, Volpe. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee X Stein?
Yes.
Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Row?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. And I guess if you need to, Joel or Phillip, you can read, but I will get that signed tomorrow. Okay, that'll be perfect. Thank you, Joel. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on the Fire Authority Memorandum of Understanding. Trustees will consider adopting a Fire Authority Memorandum of Understanding between Chaffee County Fire Protection District and the town. Phillip, you leading in?
That. All right, thank you all. Page 25 of the packet is my memo that summarizes what we're bringing forward tonight for your consideration. We're also joined by Fire Chief from Chaffee County Fire Protection District, Robert Bertram, and interim Fire Chief Chris Green from Town of BV. So they are here to answer any questions that may come up. So don't be shy if there's clarifying questions. We're still early on in this process, but we were happy to have conversation about this, this effort tonight. So before you is a memo of understanding that outlines what we intend to do over the next several months as we aim to form an IGA that would establish the fire authority. So how do we get there? Primarily, what we need to do is form a steering committee. And similar to what we did with the Housing Authority last year, getting representation from the Town of BV staff and Chaffee County Fire Protection District to go through and spend a few months kind of digging into the details a bit on two main things, really, you could think of. One is governance. How will the Fire Authority on an ongoing basis be represented from these two entities? So essentially, a new Board of Directors and how that board is made up. And the second is finance. And that, again, will be looking at not only what we intend to do in 2022, for example, but how does ongoing finance work for a new fire authority? How do we anticipate what town's contribution will be into the Fire Authority, for example? How do we keep up with capital planning? And how is that structured in a way that we know what to expect when it comes to budgeting for the town? So the steering committee is a key, key component of the MOU. The second part is a list of services that would be provided by Chaffee County Fire during this interim period, this MOU period, that essentially will help, will assist us, one, to kind of maintain our current fire services, given that we're in a time period where we have an interim chief and things like that. But, but more importantly, it also starts to integrate the teams a little bit more so that if we reach the end of this project in 2021 and have an IGA, it's not flipping the switch and having a drastic operational change. We'd rather get the teams integrated a little bit more and identify, you know, what's working, what's not working along the way. So that's the intent of those services. And in there, there are some funding components. The primary one is, is $1,500 a month that would go towards administrative and operational support, primarily through Chief Bertram and his administrative staff. So a lot of that is in consultation with our fire department on things like as we progress with our fire station enhancements this year, all the way to personnel decisions. The MOU is, is written in a way that we will collaborate on that. Essentially, town still retains its authority to make decisions on budget and personnel, but we want to start consulting on those type of items so that eventually, if we do reach the end of this project and form a fire authority, we've done things that are building that up and not things that we have to undo later. We're also looking at a mechanic and fire inspection support that would be on an hourly basis as needed. Again, looking at leveraging resources right out of the gate here. And so those financial components in the MOU would be contained within our 2021 fire budget. So we're not talking about amending our budget. We have savings because of our staffing model right now where we're in an interim period and we're using a couple of temporary hires. It affords us the ability to, to spend some money this way. We also have eliminated the part-time mechanic position that we've had for the last few years. That, that position has been vacated for 2021. So we have savings there as well. So really what I'm, I'm asking for direction and, and a couple of motions from the board if they want to move forward. One is a motion regarding the MOU itself. And two is, is really looking at how, how do we get a board member to, to participate in the steering committee along with staff so that we have good representation from the town? So those are the, the two things that we're looking for tonight. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Phillip. I, I want to open it up to either Chris or Robert, if you would have anything you'd like to add. I guess I would, I would open it up to Chris first because I, obviously, he's going to be representing Buna Vista. And so what are your thoughts? And so what are your thoughts, Chris? What, what do you foresee?
Well, thank you, sir. Um, and thank you, uh, trustees for giving us the opportunity to talk about this. Um, of course, it's a, it's a tough decision. You know, this department's been here for a long time. Um, you know, and I know the, the previous chief really fought it tooth and nail, um, because he wanted it to stay within the town. Um, in talking with Phillip and having a, talking with, uh, Chief Bertram, um, and really searching my heart, I think it's the best thing for the town. Um, I think it's, it's what the town deserves, uh, because it it increases our capability to have us have a better product or a better service for the town. Um, right now we're, we're stretched pretty thin. Um, and this opportunity, uh, to work with Chaffey County, um, which is something, you know, a lot of fire departments love to work, work with each other. Um, and it's just one of those things that it's a natural thing that we do is wanting to train together and wanting to go on calls together. Um, and it, it gives us this opportunity to really work with them. Um, I like Chaffey County a lot. There are a lot of great guys over there. Um, so it's, it's certainly nothing that has to do with their capabilities. Uh, there's a lot of positives, you know, they have a great training facility. Um, they've got the personnel to help out, you know, if something big happens. They can help out especially with, um, inspections and planning for future town growth. Uh, there's just a lot of good that goes, that can come of this. Um, I don't see it as being negative other than hopefully not losing who Buena Vista Fire, Buena Vista Fire is. Um, we're not going to ever lose our history. Uh, that's something that I've talked about from the very first meeting was we have to preserve our history. Uh, that's very important to me and I, I think it's important to a lot of people in this town. So, um, I think this discussion is worth diving into further. Of course, it's not a done deal. So, you know, down the road, uh, it could all not be worth it in the end, but at least it's being explored and, and something that we should look at.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Robert, do you have anything you'd like to add right now?
No, the biggest thing, I mean, I know this is something that's come up year after year, uh, probably since the district creation in 1974, when you know, we were actually part of, the, the town was part of Northern Chaffey County Fire Protection District when it was formed. Um, since then, we've been outside there. We've talked about this quite a bit. And, you know, ultimately we haven't had the right avenues to go for that. As we've talked and integrated, I think this is an opportunity to be able to serve the public the best way we can by joining forces, um, eliminating duplication and moving forward with that. So just keep it brief and thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you for coming in. Um, and trustees understand this is a, um, memorandum of understanding and basically these, this is the first step. It's not an agreement, uh, an, an intergovernmental agreement or, or any kind of agreement at this point, other than a research document is what I'll call it. Uh, we're going to start looking at how we can possibly form something and make it work. Um, as Phillip pointed out, there's some interim things that are going to happen that will uh, assist our department at this point in time with the administrative, the mechanic work, and there is no budget impact. Are there any questions, trustees? I would entertain a motion if you would like.
I would make the motion to approve the MOU as presented.
I'll, I'll second that.
Second Fay, further discussion? I will have roll call vote, please.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg? Trustee Nyberg? Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher? Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher? Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
I think, buddy Paula, did you catch him?
I think we got them all.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all very much. And, uh, now the second thing is, is we're looking for Phillip is a well, let's start with a volunteer.
Yeah, she
otherwise we'll appoint somebody. Amy, you have your hand up. She just volunteered. Everybody's happy. No, Amy, what do you have?
Um, nope, I would be happy to volunteer. I feel like this, I learned a lot about fire during Core Safety. Um, I don't have a background in fire, but I'd like to be part of the discussion. And I would keep the board up to date on anything that's developing in the IGA. So, but I understand other people want to probably do it as well, or no one.
Okay, guys, um,
Happy to have two, happy to have two, but.
I know you have that, Phillip. Um, and that would be a maximum, obviously, Jeff, we'd be looking at a meeting if we went any larger than that, so.
Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else with interest at this point in time?
I'd be down.
Oh, man, who is first?
Hope you can do it.
I'll step back. Nope, nope, Devin and David can do it. That's okay. I've got the housing authority, so.
We'll wrestle over it later on.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, if you guys want to volunteer, no problem.
You know, and I understand, I, I agree with you, Amy, you do have the housing. I don't know if that would strap you too much.
Oh, I've got so much time to go over this stuff, Mayor. You can't believe it. No, you guys do it. I'm good. Thank you, though. Good luck.
Are you guys good with that, Devin and David?
Yeah.
How'd that just happen?
I don't know how it happened. But I'm fine with it, you know, doesn't matter to me. I'd like to help out and, uh, you know, Amy really wants to do it. She can do it, but I'm totally excited to help out, so.
That'd be great. I think we have two, Phillip. And thank you, Chris and Robert, and, uh, look forward to hearing more information.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees.
Have a good night, gentlemen, and thanks for joining us. Next item on the agenda is adoption.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need a motion appointing Devin and David as members to the board?
We could do that.
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Libby.
Second.
Second Swisher, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No hearing none. Thank you, Paula, and thank you everybody for joining in. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the Architectural Design Guidelines. Should the Board of Trustees approve adoption of Resolution um, nine, series 2021 entitled, "The Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, Adopting the Town of Buena Vista Architectural Design Guidelines for Historic, Historic East Main Street?" Question mark.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you, Mark. Thanks. Um, before you, staff orders on page thirty-four, the Architectural Design Guidelines start on page thirty-five. Um, this is a culmination of the Historic Preservation Commission's uh, efforts to get some design guidelines for the downtown area. Um, specifically, we are looking at adopting these guidelines for, um, a portion of East Main Street from the highway to South Main. And it is a budding, the, um, both sides of the main street to the mid-block with the exception of the, uh, elementary school. So the, um, map is in the design guidelines and um, Phillip, if you'll give me, uh, the ability to share my screen, I'll show that map. So on, on the screen before you is the area highlighted bordered in red. So it is basically to the alley north of East Main Street, south of East Main Street to the alley. Um, it does include the, uh, BV Heritage Museum, and then the boundaries go around the elementary school and then continue on down, um, and get in the privately held portion of land, um, Newbies, and then extends all the way over to the South Main and then comes back along this, the alley and goes all the way to the highway. So this is the area where the historic architectural design guidelines would be applied. Any questions at this time?
I see no hands, Mark. Go ahead.
All right. Um, so the, this effort started back in 2018. The, the Historic Preservation Commission has spent a lot of time putting these together to try and encapsulate the character of BV's downtown area, which is fairly eclectic. Um, but they are very much concerned about the ability of, um, the economy right now to demolish structures and replace them with new ones. So these are historic guidelines that we would be using for structures that are designated historic. And then also, um, associated with this is some ordinance changes to, um, chapter nineteen that we'll talk about next. So with that, I'll open up to any questions that anyone has.
Trustees, questions? Go ahead, Amy.
Hey, Mark, can you, for, I understand the guidelines because we've looked through them a few times. But can you just remind me how the guidelines, there's the guidelines and the ordinance? Will these guidelines be referenced in the UDC?
They actually are in the chapter nineteen, which is our historic preservation section. So it's not, UDC is chapter sixteen. So these are
Okay.
um, done for changes in the ordinance we'll talk about here in a little bit is our changes to chapter nineteen that reference the Architectural Design Guidelines.
Okay. Um, well, I'm in support of these guidelines. We've been through them a few times. I know it's taken a long time, but I would feel comfortable with these guidelines.
Are there any other questions at this point for Mark? Go ahead, Libby.
Uh, I would just, um, say that I, I know that a lot of work has gone into all of this over the last, um, you know, two and a half years. And, um, I appreciate it and I think it's really important for the character of our downtown. So I'd like to see us pass this as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments at this point?
I've got a, a question about, I guess intent of this. Is, is the intent to have this be sort of a, a, as, as presented anyway, as, as sort of a test document that we can update, get feedback on and include eventually as code and, and I, I, I still, yeah, I, I'm wrestling with with the tertiary nature of this, this document as it relates to the planning process and, and hopefully eventually it becomes part of our code.
Yeah. Um, right now, these are design guidelines. They're not requirements that are the rule of law. So the intent is to put together these guidelines and use these and learn from them. And then hopefully they grow into if we pursue an historic district, those would be rules that would be part of a historic district. And, uh, Jeff unmuted himself, so turn it over to him. No, no, I was just waiting to get a chance to mention something. Yeah, they, they do apply to alterations that are taking place in the area that Mark just showed you. So, um, if there's going to be alterations to, um, what's basically considered to be historic structures, um, they will have to comply with those guidelines only on that East Main area. And so, um, there, they, they are being incorporated by reference via the ordinance for those purposes. For new construction in the MU MS Zone District, they're just, they are just guidelines that people have the option of getting HPC feedback on with respect to their new construction. I want to make sure that, uh, Mark's okay with my, um, summary of that, but I believe that's accurate.
All right. Can I, can I just make one clear clarification to make sure I'm on the same page? Um, it would be, they would apply for locally designated structures that are going through uh, an alteration or a remodel or, or even a demo, a demo request.
Yeah, that's right.
Other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, realizing that these are just guidelines, um, I would not want it to take a long period of time because we're developing and growing fast. And if we really do want to preserve our downtown district, I would like to see these as more than guidelines because someone in our previous meeting referred to as a contractor needing to get the best bang for his buck. That doesn't preserve our, that doesn't preserve our main street. Anytime you build, you want to get, get the best value you possibly can. But if you, some things that might possibly be built there might better be suited to be built elsewhere. So I, in order to preserve our town, I hope that we do not leave these as guidelines for a long period of time.
Thank you, Cindy. Amy, do you have something?
Um, sure. Mark, during the process then, if someone, um, tries to develop in the historic district, um, they go through the HPC. If the HPC says this design does not meet, uh, would not meet our approval, does that, can it go to the board? And that can be, was that part of it at all?
If, so the intent as they're written now is that process is voluntary. So it's really, if you are building new construction, um, then you have the opportunity to hear from our historic preservation commission if you choose. A lot of people come in and say, well, what is the town want? That would be our mechanism, but if they are proposing a development that is otherwise not coming to the board, if, for example, it's a major site plan, it would only go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or if it was a minor site plan, it would be reviewed by staff unless the board chose to pull it up for review. And that's where, um, we come to you and say, we've got an application. Would you like it to come to the board? The board always has the ability to call those up if you so choose.
Do you foresee doing that if someone wants to build like a glass house in the heart of the historic East Main? Do you think that, do you foresee that path happening?
I foresee that there's always going to be people who have their own ideas. And it really is something that it's my job to bring that proposal to you early enough to, for you to make a decision. If you want to call it up because it is a, if you determine it is an important enough thing for the board to review and not just staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a question to that. But if it meets regular building code, there, we have no choice but to approve it. If we're only going by guidelines and we're looking at something and they meet all the building code, how can we deny it?
If you call up a case before you, you have the ability to review those plans given the criteria that are outlined in our code. So several of those things are identified in our code are, does it meet the comprehensive plan and does it meet the Unified Development Code requirements? So those would be elements that we would highlight with any staff report and allow us to present that information for you to make a decision based upon the application that you're seeing before you.
Go ahead, Phillip.
Yeah, sorry to jump in, gang. I just, I feel like there's some confusion and I hopefully don't mix it up more here, but let me, let me try to clarify a couple of points. One, this does not establish a historic district. Um, the, the map that Mark, Mark showed in the guidelines, um, that's where these guidelines would be applicable. So if somebody's coming in with a new build, they have to comply with our UDC. And just as a reminder, And just as a reminder, our UDC does have design standards for Main Street, mixed-use Main Street. That we, you're not, you, they can't build a glass house or a metal shed or anything like that. So there are protections already in the code that, uh, require things like mixed use with commercial on bottom. They could do residential on top. Uh, the, uh, the forming of the buildings have to be a certain way and the materials have to comply with what's in the code. Um, the guidelines go a little bit beyond that. They look at specific, more specific materials. But the code is already in place. We're not going to get anything overly drastic.
Okay.
They may not comply with the guidelines as drafted now. Um, but the worst case scenarios are, are already protected by our code. Um, the guidelines are an optional thing for people coming in to build brand new. They're a great reference, uh, that can be looked at by people coming to the community. We get asked a lot, what does the town want? And right now, all we can do is really point to the code. That's somewhat, somewhat helpful. The guidelines can go that step further. So we do feel like there's value there, uh, to provide a, a better answer. What does the town want? Well, here you go. Um, yeah, they can completely ignore them. That is true. Uh, if they want, but from our experience, we really haven't come across somebody that just wants to completely ignore uh, something like that. Could happen, but just from our experience so far. Um, the other thing, um, we, we, uh, it does, this does not add any extra process for new construction. They won't come through the HPC for a review. Um, it, it follows the normal, as Mark was just mentioning. Uh, if it's a new commercial building or, or major subdivision, it goes through a site plan and, and things like that. Uh, you all do have visibility to some of that. You can call those things up. But they still have to meet the criteria of the code and the building code. So it's not like, um, we get into, well, we don't like the look of that, even though it is complying with our code. So to some of those points, that is true. And so that's kind of where we're at. Um, we'd like to get this out. I know the HPC would like to get this out. And as Trustee Volpe mentioned, it is something we can learn from. And eventually, if there's components that need to be rolled into the code, we can do that. Thank you. Sorry. Hopefully that helps.
Thanks, Philip. Thank you.
Does that help, Cindy?
It, it helped some, um, but I'm not, I'm not trying to be a problem maker, but I'm going to say graffiti railcar. Um, that has, how did, that's why I want to, to make sure that we're going through because we, we really don't want to see that happen again.
Yeah, the, the railcar that is up there on Chestnut's actually outside of this district. So this wouldn't apply anyway.
Okay.
But if they are able to meet our criteria for, uh, approval, whether that's a major site plan, minor site plan or a building permit, we are going to do our duty to make sure that if it meets the code, we're going to approve it.
Okay.
If it doesn't meet the code, we're going to approve it. So at some point, if you have concerns about those things like the railcar, then maybe that's a separate discussion about how those can be prevented.
Thank you.
Dave, go ahead.
So, um, assuming we adopt this, um, to, to kind of blend my concerns and Cindy's concern, is there, rather than that, just have a, a document that just sits in a drawer or not sits in a drawer, but gets brought out during development? And then, I, I guess what I'm asking is, will, will there be, is there something in place to update this and to have a feedback mechanism to make sure we're on track? So that if we do want to codify any, any of it, we can, uh, uh, just next steps, I guess, is what I'm asking for.
I- if you were wanting to, after a, a, a period to evaluate this, you can certainly do that. Plus, if you want to actually create his, in a historic district that would give regulations versus guidelines, that is something that would have to be done, given the requirements of our historic preservation ordinance, which does require an election of those folks who are forming the district. And it is a fairly high standard to get approval for that district.
Thank you.
Amy?
And just one closing thing worth noting, I do own a property in this, um, in the, it would be the historic district. I don't feel it impacts my decision-making on it. But I was involved originally when there was dis- originally discussion of these guidelines. And maybe some from HPC can chime in is the, the majority of people that were involved in that committee to start with, which were community members, um, and property owners preferred guidelines rather than, um, codifying. And they cited success from other municipalities. So that was, in terms of, um, this group working, that was, that was part, that came from it was the guidelines. Um, there was consensus built around that, just so folks know. But I understand people want to codify it. I understand that too, but I just wanted to give you some background on that.
Thank you. More questions for comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Cindy.
Second, Textine.
Second, Fay, or excuse me, I'm sorry, Amy. Further discussion?
I'd just like to request that we revisit this in six months or so, just ask for an update and, ask for feedback from HPC and the development community, if possible.
Okay, thank you, Dave. I like, I, good comment. Very good.
Very good.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee X time?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yeah.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Next is the ordinance that was brought up. An ordinance amending chapter nineteen of the Buena Vista Municipal Code. Should the Board of Trustees approve adoption of ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-one, entitled, in nor- ordinance amending sections of the Buena Vista Municipal Code concerning historic preservation.
Thank you, Mayor. On page eighty of your packet is the staff report for that. Basically, this is an ordinance amending portions of chapter nineteen to make sure that we are being consistent with the municipal code and the architectural design guidelines. Um, it also adds the guidelines involuntary review of new construction um, that are, it's shown on that map. Excuse me. Um, it is, um, makes clarification of language between what is an historic structure and what is a designated historic structure. So making sure that we've got consistent language between the guidelines and the municipal code. And I will, at this point, will open it up to Jeff if he has anything else to add.
No, I don't. It's, it's mostly cleaned up to basically reference the guidelines and how they're used. And then we dealt with, um, some language that was in the previous code that was using just various terms inconsistently. So as Mark pointed out, that's the main purpose of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you both. Does anybody have any questions for either Jeff or Mark? It sounds like it's just tidying up, basically making things align.
That's right. And it's also referencing the guidelines and how they're used. So like we just discussed.
Thank you, Jeff. Amy, you have a question?
Sure, uh, page eighty-two, section three, nineteen dash ten. There you go. Um, designated structures, is that pretty much anything in that red line?
No.
Just fifty?
That is if a structure is designated as historic landmark.
Okay. And then, um, so B is before an owner is cited for failure. Have we discussed this before?
This is actually in our code. It's with some changes to the terminology, but this is in chapter nineteen right now.
Other questions, comments? Libby?
Um, I just have a couple of typographical changes. One of them is on page eighty-one, both are on eighty-one, under a certificate of historic appropriateness. Um, I think it should say approval of plans for alteration of any designated structure or site or any structure in a designated district. So I think it just needs the word for put before alteration and delete the comma before site.
Good catch.
Yep.
Great. The only other one is, um, under section two, the, uh, the last sentence there should just be in alphabetical order rather than alphabetically order.
Perfect, thanks. Libby, appreciate that.
I think that's it.
Other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve as amended or deny?
I'll make that motion to approve it. Approve ordinance number O two, series eight twenty-one, as amended.
Thank you. Thank you, Norm. Second, Nyberg. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee X time?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much and thank you, Mark, for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you, Jeff. Next item on the agenda is cost recovery for the town public improvements for the alley in block twenty-one. I'm assuming, Mark, you'll, uh, you leading off on this, Philip, or is Mark got to run at it again?
Uh, I got it. I'm going to take that if you would, there. All right. So on page eighty-five of your packet is an informational item that we're bringing forward to you to let you and the public know what we've come up with for the alley in block twenty-one. Um, I'll be presenting it. Jeff is here in case you have any legal questions with regards to, um, questions, how we would recover those costs. And then Sean is here to answer some questions that may be out of my league with regards to the engineering. But basically, I'm gonna show a s- a screen of a few items for you and for the public. So let me, let me get that.
That phone sounds awesome.
Um, sorry, Trick. Phil, can you let me share my screen? Thank you. Um, so let me do this. All right, so you guys see that on your screen? Yep. Sorry, my apologies. Um, this is on the screen before you, this block twenty-one. It's located between Main Street, Cedar Street, Chestnut, uh, Court Street and Beldon Street. So the alley has never been built, shown here in orange. And that is, um, what we are proposing to build. So kind of give you an idea, let me scroll down. This is a, a ownership map of the properties that are along the alley. So these are the property owners that we sent notices to, letting them know that we are going to be building this alley and then, um, recovering the cost for the construction of the alley. So on the screen are all the property owners that would be affected. The majority of the properties are developed, all of them on the south side are built. Um, Southport Social is, um, beginning construction on the west side of the north of the alley. And we have an existing apartment building on the north side at the east end of the block. So that is the property owners, kind of give you a little bit better view of that. So these are the folks that we sent letters to informing them that we are going to begin the construction process of this alley because the alley is going to be needed, particularly if we have new commercial development along East Main Street. But that alley will also be supporting the residential uses that are on the south side of the alley. Um, so moving on, this is a cross-section of the alley. The north side of the alley is on the left, the south side of the alley is on the right. We are proposing to grade the alley from the south to the north and catch that water in the alley in a concrete pan. And then run the water from east, from west to east. So this is Court Street here on the screen. We are proposing to put in the sidewalk across the alley, grade the alley with uh, six inches of road base and build a concrete pan that will send the water down to Beldon Street. And we are also proposing the construction of the sidewalk that is there. So that is the proposal. We have our engineer prepare a cost estimate. This is just that, just an estimate, but for budgeting purposes, so we know what we're looking at. The final cost will obviously be determined at the time we begin that project and we'll collect all those costs and assemble those. And that's where Jeff's expertise will come in. And we will assemble those and then assign those costs to the abutting property owners. And our proposal right now is to split those costs based upon the frontage of your lot. So if you have a twenty-five foot wide lot, you're going to have a different payment than if you have a fifty-foot wide lot. If fifty-foot wide lot will have a double payment, uh, over that of a property owner who has twenty-five foot wide. And we'll do that based upon the linear frontage cost. The alley is four hundred feet long, so it's eight hundred feet total. So based upon these estimated costs, you're looking at about a hundred and twelve dollars a linear foot to build. And you're looking at, if you have a twenty-five-foot wide lot, approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars that we would be looking to get reimbursement back after it's constructed. So with that, I know that's a lot to take in. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. But, uh, just real quick, kind of giving you a photograph, looking from Court Street East. These are the existing power poles that were there. Um, there are new power poles that Sangre Cristo put in and has moved their power lines. They're waiting to get the telecommunication lines off of the, some of these poles, the wires that are below from, I believe it's Colorado Central phone before those poles get removed. And you can see the existing sidewalk along Court Street in this photograph that we would be connecting to and would connect to the Southport Social Project over here on the left. And then looking, um, from Beldon Street looking west, this is, I think, a fairly good representation of what we have in place today. We are proposing to basically put an alley that would be in the location of those power poles. And so we want to make sure that that water is coming off this block, it's down to Beldon Street and then continues down to where it needs to go drainage-wise. Which is why the engineers propose building it in two phases because we do want to have a conversation with the property owner. Um, at both property owners in particular, uh, at this end of the alley to make sure when we put this alley in that they have opportunities to get access for their properties off of this alley. Right now, the property on the right, the apartments, actually have traffic that backs out into Main Street. That is going to have to go away if we build a sidewalk along. That is going to have to go away if we build a sidewalk along East Main Street. So with that, I'll open up to questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Trustees, questions? It appears that this would be, um, I'll say, Jeff, no different than, uh, how we address the development by putting in a street. Uh, actually, I guess it was street and water lines, um, back behind the school where we went ahead and put it in as a town, took the prob and then assessed those, uh, expenses to those landowners.
Yeah, it would be essentially the same process.
Okay. Um, Mark, you've, you've made some contact. Are we getting any kind of kickback at all? Are you hearing anything, um, in particular?
We did get one phone call from a property owner, um, just really asking about this meeting tonight. That, um, conversation, you know, we're happy to have with them. Happy to have a conversation with any of the other property owners. We did send out a letter. Um, I would like to hear from them because I do think there are some coordination details on how that alley gets built that we want to make sure we're being good neighbors working on our property as it relates to how it interacts with their property.
Hey, thank you, Mark. Amy, you had a question?
Thanks, Mayor. Is, so the alley is, it's not going to be paved? It will be dirt?
It will be road base. It will not be paved asphalt.
Okay. And then any of the cement worked on that pan when, um, that will be dug up whenever the structures are installed or built?
So if, if new development comes in and they need to do any connections like sewer or electrical that's underground and they need to get under that, they will have to replace that pan as part of their public improvements when they do that new construction. So you will see a public improvements agreement for those elements as well as the elements that they're gonna have to build along East Main Street, the sidewalk, street trees and streetlights, et cetera.
And how will this, how is this alley different than, um, if nothing's done, will it just look like all the other alleys in town? Is it, I'm just trying to think, because I see the road base alleys here. How will it differ?
Um.
Or Philip, Philip, yeah.
Yeah, I think Sean might be the best person to talk about that.
Yeah.
Hey, everyone. Yeah, I think, um, there's probably a small portion of this alley currently that might emulate some of the other alleys in town. Um, the bulk of it is pretty raw and undefined, so um, looks like there's been some activity on the, on the west end of it, right? Because there are some, um, there's some activity for the residents on Cedar Street. So there's some shape and some definition there, but where the, where the poles were aligned there, you can see that's, um, yeah, looking, that's looking west to east. Mark, that other photo kind of captured the, um, yeah, so, so there we have it right there. Where there's really nothing there. And in fact, um, you know, it's, it's more of a trail system right now.
Okay.
Um.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and, and, you know, one thing I just wanted to, to bring up this, this, you know, if, if this, we were to move forward on this and we were gonna do, um, some cost recovery opportunities for the town. You know, this would impact the street fund to some extent and also the stormwater fund to some extent um, with the, with the funding that we have, right? So the current, um, um, street fund amount and, and stormwater amounts would, would be impacted. One thing I can say that we might be able to look at, um, because of, especially on, on the, on the east end. You know, there might be an opportunity for us to kind of look and see if maybe in the future, this might be a great opportunity for, uh, the town sidewalk replacement program, which is already funded annually and might help lessen the impact and, and give us what, you know, the designs that we want. One thing I, I will say that's kind of neat that, um, RG put together is the, uh, the details um, in the plan set are kind of a first look at, you know, some of the standard details that we've been putting together. So it's got some, um, direction, right, for, for future development. And it's been a thoughtful process and, uh, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's, um, and it's other communities as tax, like, so half the southern end of the block that's built out, that's normal to ask them for, to pay for the alley after? That's, it just, I can't get a context for what, what expectations are for something like that.
Um, I'll, I'll refer that to Jeff to let him talk about other communities and how this is done around the state.
Sorry about that. Uh, this is a, a pretty standard process. Um,
Okay.
What we generally do is we, um, set forth the parameters of how we're going to actually, um, assess the costs, which is going to be based on linear footage and usually have an estimated cost at that point. That whole sort of process will go into the first ordinance. And then, once the money's been spent, project's done, there'll be the actual second ordinance that actually is assessing the costs. And the property owners will have an opportunity to basically be present for the first ordinance, setting forth how it's gonna be done. And then have us opportunity to be present and actually, um, be part of a public hearing for the final assessment that lays out the actual costs and allocates the cost to their property. So people have an opportunity to basically, um, object or provide comments regarding how the town's gonna do this. So nobody gets just assessed out of the blue.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to hearing from, um, the local residents. So I'm glad staff sent that, that letter out. Thanks.
That, that was our intent to reach out to them to see if we can get them to have a conversation. Um, we do intend to bring this back for the board to actually take action later in the year, and I hope to bring that in, um, in the beginning of February. So no action for the board at this time. It was more just to inform you as to what we've actually come up with for the design and our proposed method.
Hey, any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Sean, Jeff. I assume we're moving forward. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Fading West Home LLC Public Improvement Agreement. Should the Board of Trustees approve adoption of resolution number ten, series twenty-twenty-one entitled "A Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista Colorado Public Improvement Agreement with Fading West Homes LLC for the property known as Lot C dash thirteen in the Colorado Center PUD amended final plat filing one amendment one Buena Vista, Colorado."
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be presenting this. This is basically a, a, a resolution authorizing you to, to sign the public improvements agreement for the fading west factory that we, um, was mentioned earlier tonight. So we have put together a, uh, cost estimate and a public improvements agreement. They have signed that and turned that into town. This is the resolution authorizing you to sign that so that we have um, the, those costs known and that they're paying for those costs. Should they disappear from the project, the town has the opportunity to install those public improvements. And with that, I will be quiet and answer any questions that you may have.
Trustees, questions or comments for Mark? I would entertain a motion if there are none.
I'll make the motion to approve the public improvements agreement for fading west homes.
Second?
Second Nyberg? Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee X Stein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Boeby?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Um, I'll just make a comment. These are some exciting times right at the moment. Very exciting times. Next item on the agenda is item I, the twenty-twenty fourth quarter financial report. I don't know. I don't know who to let have this one. Oh, there she is. Hi, Michelle.
Sorry, I was working on the budget book. Um, hey, you caught me off guard. I thought there was an administrator report before this.
Well, but you're the, this is the fourth quarter financial.
Ah, okay. Well, that makes sense, but this is all the fun stuff and the treasury report is boring. So this is the fourth quarter financial report wrapping up, uh, twenty-twenty, which, in my opinion, is good riddance for twenty-twenty. Um, everything here is current as of twelve thirty-one with the exception of sales sales tax and the resultant charts from it. So, um, Philip, if you want to slip down to the sales tax chart. So because I missed, I was, um, out of town and, and misreporting on December, sales tax, um, well, sales tax received in December for October. I included both of those here and, um, as holding true with the trend for the remain, for the previous part of the year, we're still showing an increase. And, um, what can I say? Twenty-twenty wasn't the disaster regarding sales tax as we thought it would be. There are other disasters, but this one wasn't one of them. So if anyone has any questions on that. And then, um, the balance sheet, which I always present and nobody ever asked me any questions on the balance sheet. These are accounts that are mostly assets and are the same from year to year except that we, oh, they always remain on the balance sheet. They are, um, they flow from one year to another, just like a savings account would. Um, investments, they're just assets and liabilities, but but unlike the income statement, which is closed every year, the balance sheet stays open all, all the time. Um, so we see all nine of our fun, well, all seven, seven of our current funds. We are adding two more funds, but they're not here because they don't apply to twenty-twenty. Um, I'm seeing as of nine thirty twenty-twenty, um, uh, in the heading of this, that's not true. That's as of the end of the year twenty-twenty. That's my bad. Um, and then the reason they call it a balance sheet is the totals, uh, the total assets match the total liabilities plus the revenue and expenditures as is added in. These two lines here on the far right of the two sections equal and they balance. So there you go. Um, if anybody has any questions, go ahead and, and fire them off. Um, this one, a lot of people are usually pretty interested in, uh, because they are interested in the un- uncommitted unrestricted balance of, of cash in our funds. Basically, these are our savings accounts and the, the big ones are the, the general fund and we have restricted stuff that we take out prior to it being unrestricted so that nine ninety-two is what is available for the trustees. That's our unrestricted fund balance as of the end of the year, and that's just estimated. It hasn't been audited yet. The, so the restrictions are the table restrictions. They're restricted for the fire department and that is, um, as of right now, the amount should go up because I've talked to Shawna and she still has seven deposits, reimbursement deposits that she's waiting on. So that should go up by quite a bit. Um, and then the twenty-seven percent reserves per the Board of Trustees, that's what you wanted to set aside for emergency funds. And then that leaves the unrestricted fund balances. Now typically in the street fund and in the water fund, there's restrictions for debt service. Those, um, debt payments, interest and principles, interest and principal, um, they're to the right of where you have your cursor. Yeah. Those payments have been made for twenty-twenty and so they're no longer restricted. Those amounts appear are inherent in the expenditures, um, previously. So I don't take them out again. That would be double, double expenditures. Um, there are some footnotes if you're interested. Um, they say that, that all debt has been paid and the amount, um, this amount, uh, for the restricted, for the fire equipment will, uh, become the beginning balance of the new incident response fund, whatever that ends up being once those seven deposits come in. Um, the next chart that we have is our investment account. And, um, if you scroll down a little further, that's where we left off for, um, the third quarter status report. And, um, mostly I wanted to point out that there at the end of October, we purchased another five hundred thousand dollar bond. Um, mostly with the proceeds, you know, we purchased that, we, we redeemed. We redeemed in the third quarter and made a purchase right away. And then we also made a purchase because another one was coming due in, um, November and we decided, I decided to get the interest rates while they were still a little bit higher. And so, um, that is the story there. We're, we're showing a balance of three point two million, which is largely water fund unrestricted fund balance, funds that are put into the investment fund. So, um, and then we have a budget report, which I still don't like the, the way it tallies the numbers. Sometimes they're confusing. But, um, we um, were within budget constraints for the entire year. We never did adopt the COVID budget adjustment, which we thought, which we had come up with in May when we, or March, when we did the shutdown. We thought we were gonna see a substantial drop in sales tax revenues, which we did not. And so we never did adopt that budget. We just stuck to the same budget that was passed in December of two thousand nineteen. We did pass an adjustment in, um, it was October. And at that point, we had captured all of the, um, adjustments that were approved by the board throughout the year pri, the prior months. And so we made a decision not to do an end of the year budget adjustment because it would, it, it's, it wouldn't be necessary. So those are the reports and I know they're just great fun, um, to read if you don't have anything to put you to sleep. And I'd be willing to take any questions. And I'd be willing to take any questions, comments, excuses.
Okay, well, you know, will this work at 3:30 in the morning? Put me back to sleep?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Just want to make sure. Are there any questions for Michelle? It has been an interesting year, has it not?
It has been. And um what I'm working on in the budget book when I, when it gets published at the end of the week is a really good explanation as to why our businesses suffered the way they did and yet we showed um growth in sales tax revenue. It, it's real, it's real interesting. When you put all the elements that I've been tracking together, uh, it, it really does show, it does tell the story of what happened with our finances this year. So.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle at this point? Great. We'll move forward to staff reports. Philip?
All right, I'm back. Thank you all. Um, okay, my report on page 120 of the packet. Yeah, tonight, big agenda. Um, as you can see from my report, there's plenty more coming. So just kind of calling out some things that will be coming up. We're gonna, we're gonna hit a few work sessions over the next couple of months. Uh, one is planned for next week. Uh, sorry, next meeting, uh, February 9th before the regular meeting. Taking a look at a, a development and annexation proposal. Get that before you um and then uh potentially having an exec session, that same meeting to further discuss it and get direction. Uh, we're also, we've locked in our board advance strategic planning session for February 20th, uh, starting at 9:00 AM and we'll try to wrap around 2:00 uh with lunch provided. So uh got some good feedback from trustees. Uh, I'm working with Christie Dune to try to mash things together into an agenda that makes sense. And I think from my perspective, I'm, I'm just looking forward to discussion, uh, hearing discussion. So I think that'll be a great opportunity for us all. Uh, we're looking at a work session before the February 23rd meeting to uh bring in our municipal court team to have a little bit of a deeper dive and meet, meet those folks and, and talk about how our court system works. And then we are looking to have a, a, a work session with our recreation department, the first meeting in March. So look forward to those. Uh, I included some updates, uh, things going on with our school district. Uh, obviously they're very focused with, with uh operating during COVID and managing, managing all of that. Uh, and yet business and things move on. So we, we uh have kicked off an update and review of our school resource officer program or SRO program. Uh, chief uh Morgan and I joined uh school staff to go through that. Got some great input and we, we've identified ways to continue to adjust and improve that role. Uh, looking forward to joining them in February at a school board meeting to kind of update on a few things. But just want to highlight development, development, development. Um, even the schools looking at development uh opportunities. This one's not, not um i- is very early on, but they're looking at the property they own over where the arch is uh just north of Main Street. And uh town staff will be involved with some very preliminary design concepts that are coming forward from Chaffey County uh or Chaffey Community Foundation. And uh looking at trying to, to utilize that property to help build out potentially some, some school space, but also some, some housing space. So uh we'll, we'll see where that leads. Uh, looking to move forward with some form of street lighting plan. This project Joel's been leading for us, working with Sangre de Cristo. Thank you all for providing feedback on the light, the test light that was placed at Cedar and Beldon. Uh, we'll be working with Sangre to, to see if we can put a project together in 2021 to to replace a lot of those outdated uh fixtures with more efficient and more downcast lighting. So looking forward to making some progress there. Uh, again, thank you for the work session. We had our joint work session we had last week with planning and zoning regarding water. Very good discussion around policy and the planning and zoning commission will be continuing that discussion in their meetings in February. Information technology, uh, Michael's getting underway with several of his projects, mainly replenishment of our of, of a lot of our older work stat, work stations. And then also getting things lined up to start the data center upgrade, which is upgrading our servers and our internal servers. Uh, hopefully kicking off late March. And finally, um, as you saw in the consent agenda tonight, we got some reapports and some adjustments in our water and our airport advisory board. Uh, the airport uh chair uh reached out to me and asked that I would ask to see if there's any trustees that would like to participate as a liaison in some of their meetings. So I am doing that now. Um, if you have any interest, please let me know about that. And that concludes my report. I'll take any questions.
Amy?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Um, so I'm seeing short-term rentals aren't on any key dates. Um, would it be possible we get an update on that if there's any information available?
Uh, the planning and zoning commission had a discussion in December, I believe it was their early December meeting, if not late November. The Becky Gray attended as well. Uh, there were no outcomes from that. So I think the intent is to keep that on their agenda uh in February. That's the only update I have regarding that.
Um, I'm just wondering, I can bring it up a trustee staff, that maybe um some trustees, if you wanted to come together to maybe discuss it. Um, maybe in the next month, maybe we can bring that up a trustee staff.
Okay. Other questions for Philip? Thank you, Philip. Oh, Libby, go ahead.
What about this um um workshop on Colorado Growing Water Smart? Did you talk about that?
Yes. So um it's something that Joel and I are, were looking at. The intent is to try to get more county slash regional planning um and discussions related to water. So we've, we've reached out to Upper Ark. There doesn't seem to be interest necessarily in this specific effort. Uh, so it may not be something that we pursue. Uh, we don't really want to go it alone. I don't think there's a lot of value add just for town staff to participate. So there's a couple of other ways that we um are trying to get a little, a more regional planning effort. And I think that's going to be more fruitful as of now. But just to make you aware, we're, we're trying to look at opportunities like this one to um have more of those, those discussions with our, with our other water partners in this area.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Philip. Next is town treasurer.
Here I am again. And um this also is a catch-up memo. I included the town sales tax uh statistics for the month of October. And then also for the month of November. And um one of my formulas was wrong and Philip caught the error. The original packet that was posted had incorrect year-to-date budget of uh surplus for October and November. And actually, when the formula was corrected, these numbers went up by about $150,000. So yeah, that was a good catch, Philip. Further down is my analysis of remote versus local. That first grid is uh local. And this clearly shows that um that our businesses did suffer during the COVID lockdown because of a decrease from year over year uh sales in March, April, May and June. And then uh a small recovery started to happen, uh started to turn around in July. Uh, still at 2.49% growth. Uh, it's, it's modest, but at least it's growth. And hopefully there will, we'll be able to see uh additional growth in local sales um in the future. And then the next uh grid is for remote. And keep in mind that these numbers are much smaller than the local numbers. But um the percent change was quite substantial and growth as far as between 2019 and 2020. And um, and it was enough to make up for the losses that were suffered by local businesses. So that town actually registered uh growth for all of those months. So it's an interesting um juxtaposition as far as how that happened. Um, and a lot of analysis, we've been beating our heads against that, trying to figure out why. The remaining of my report are the expenditures over 2000. And of course, all the payroll and, and stuff, but then expenditures over 2000. We did, I did um have quite a few because the last report was uh the last one in December. So I had to cover all of those expenditures that um that wraps up my report and I'll take any questions.
Libby?
Um, I noticed in the expenditures over $2,000, there are two different payments to the Chaffey County Community Fa- Foundation for Coronavirus Relief Fund. Is that, um, was that kind of a surprise that there was?
They were scheduled. Um, one was just in December and one was in um January. So.
Other questions for Michelle?
I have a question and I know that it's legit, legitimate. I'm just curious. Buena Vista tool and equipment for 20331 for forklift rental for third party.
So what that is about is our airport, when they have um testing, the companies that come in for testing will ask for different types of equipment like a crane or forklift or different types of things that we or the airport staff actually goes out to Buena Vista Tool and rents on their uh, under our name for them to use. And then they do reimburse for those expenses. So we call them third party. The airport refers to them as concierge, concierge expenses because they're doing runaround for, for these testing companies.
I knew you'd have a great answer for me. Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. Next is principal planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my uh staff report is on page 125 of your packet. Basically, summing up the year, I did notice we did have a little bit of a typo, but um as of 2020, we had 51 new single-family detached dwelling units built. We had seven accessory dwelling units built. We had one triplex, which is three units. They're actually considered single family because they are individually owned. And one five-plex in the farm. So all of that being said, that's about 66 units. Those four apartments are still waiting to be issued by the county. Dan Swallow is going to come to the board at our next meeting and talk about building permits, but still higher than our um historical average, but not quite near what we experienced in 2019 and 2018, when we had a much bigger permit year for new construction of homes. Um, additionally, uh, the planning commission has begun some of those discussions regarding water uh regulations. We'll continue that conversation with them on the 3rd and the 17th. As well as we will have the uh beginnings of the conversation with Chaffey County with regards to our IGA. We are hoping to see that in the spring. Um, it's probably going to be uh March when we get to that. The historic preservation commission has been working on the architectural guidelines that you brought, that we brought to you tonight. We also ordered historic plaques for designated properties and for some future ones. So we're hoping to get those plaques delivered here in the spring and start getting them mounted on some of our designated structures. I also anticipate that the historic preservation commission is going to be pursuing some additional landmarks um in 2021. Um, and they are also going to be attending the saving places conference coming up here. That's a big conference that state Colorado holds. Um, that's kind of nationally known. So we'll have five commissioners go into that. We are still working on the apartments for John Crum. We're working on the farm subdivision phase two that preliminary plat has gone to the planning commission and that will come to you in February. If the preliminary plat is approved, we will follow up with the final plat that actually creates those lots. And that will um not come back to the board if it's in conformance with the preliminary plat that you will see in February. We are working on a lot of subdivisions. Um, there's a subdivision we have on uh 108 East Sterling and 301 Highway 24. That's replating two lots that were illegally subdivided, trying to get that corrected. And we are trying to finalize the South Court social plat on block 21, block 34. We're um trying to get finalized that. That has a lot of challenges because that is dealing with Pine Street and Evan Street, which has yet to be built and other improvements done. So some point, like we had the discussion on block 21 tonight, you might see something in the future for that. And then block three, um, we are trying to also get that one done as well. Other than that, a lot of developments coming through the door, a lot of things. And if you notice, the packet was mostly planning centric tonight. So we've got a lot of irons in the fire and we're not even at summertime yet. Um, with that, I will say we will bring back forward a proposal from a property someone interesting annexing into town and we'll have that conversation as a work session on our next meeting. And then um we'll go into exec session afterwards to discuss what they presented and get feedback from the board as if that is something that you are interested in pursuing. With that, I'll open up to any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments for Mark? Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments for Mark? Thank you, Mark. Good presentation. You guys are still busy.
Very.
We're looking forward to next one. Obviously, I don't think many of us have been involved with an annexation discussion. So it'll be interesting for everybody to be involved. So we look forward to that next meeting.
Yeah. Jeff will, will be on his game to talk about all the, all the things that we do at the time of an annexation.
Jeff is always on his game.
I'd never heard of annexation before. What's that?
Well, you got two weeks to bone up, man. You get, get ready.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mark. Next is trustee staff interaction. Libby, what do you have?
I got my cup, my first COVID vaccine. So that was a big accomplishment. And I am interested in talking about short-term rentals. If there's a way that we can, you know, have a, maybe a less formal discussion about it, but come up with some kind of strategy. So it doesn't just fall through the cracks.
Okay. Is that all you have, Libby? Thank you. Sean?
I'm good. Thanks, Mayor.
All righty. Thank you, Sean, for joining us. Mark, do you have anything else?
Do, I have one more item. As of today, the town has updated its zoning map. So there's a brand-new zoning map available on our website. That includes the addition of the Sangre de Cristo annexation that we did last year. So that will be reflected on our zoning map. And for those of you who are map geeks, this map is much brighter in color. And we've changed our pattern for our old town overlay, which was a crosshatch, which kind of got a little crazy. Especially in those areas that have both the old town overlay and the airport overlay. So we've gone with a dot pattern or a stipple. So hopefully it's a little bit easier to read for members of the public who are looking at our zoning maps for information for their purposes. So if you're interested, there is a new map available on our webpage.
Thank you, Mark. Hey, Volpe.
Nothing really, other than I'm intrigued by what Amy and Libby alluded to. Not necessarily with short-term rentals, but just creation of a space to talk about issues that are a little more vague. And maybe it's something we could talk about at the retreat or if anybody's got a better idea. But I do like the concept of something outside of this meeting to just poke at ideas that we've got as a group, not involving staff or anything like that. So maybe something we could talk about at, at the retreat.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Devin?
Um, the only thing I had a question about was the intersection over on South Main by Swoith Circle there, where H and Co. Haircut Places and Coltrane Academy and the South Main offices is. I've just been noticing how it never melts the snow or the ice there. They get super packed down. And I have studded snows on my car and I still can't stop at that, that stop sign. And this is something that happens for, for weeks and weeks and weeks after a snow, I've noticed. I think it has to do with the buildings because they shade the sun, so it never melts. But that seems to be a very treacherous spot. I was even riding my bike down there last week before the snow and I fell on the road. But, but you know, I'm fine because I'm used to falling on my bike, so. But I was just curious to see if there was any way to make that safer because I noticed cars are always just sliding in and around that intersection. So I don't know. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Devin. Sean, you can maybe take a look at that or, or something. Sounds good.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we jumped in there. I think it was last week when it warmed up while the, the vehicles were gone. And I think that's the hard part is when we get in there and get the snow pushed out, it kind of goes where the cars are at. And then they kind of show the cars off. Everything kind of stays there and then it locks in. But we're, we're keeping an eye on that area for, for warmer weather days where we can jump in there. I think when we move into this next storm, I think we're going to reach out to South Main and maybe try to come up with a game plan where maybe we can get some vehicles removed a little bit more timely before it locks in on the pavement. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty big mountain there, so.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely on, you know, on a mountain bike. That's why I like flipped out under me because it was a huge mound of just solid ice. It's a good spot for the ice rink, you know, it never thawed, so. But yeah, it's just something to keep aware of that I've noticed because I, you know, it's hell on the road, so. But, uh, cool. Thanks, Sean. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it.
You bet. Thank you both. Norm, what do you have? Oh, is he froze up? Oh, Norm. Amy, what do you have?
Thanks, Mayor. Yep, so I think just to follow up on short-term rentals. I think it would be, I appreciate all of staff's work on it. But I think we're at a point where it may benefit from the board to come together and even just having a discussion on where we've been. What is, what does the ideal situation look like? Are we in balance? Maybe it isn't a problem at all. But I think maybe just getting together for that and what Dave Volpe said, you know, just have it maybe not in such a, not as just a 15-minute agenda item, so we can kind of work through some stuff, Mayor. And I think I'm looking at the schedule. I know it fills up so quickly. Perhaps we could just set a time, be it maybe an off-week of trustee meeting. And just say, you know, 5:30 to 6:30 and just have the board involved. I know it would have to be posted because of sunshine laws, but maybe just something to have a, just an informal discussion on it, Mayor. Do you think we could do that?
I would leave that open for motion. What I would like to see, my opinion, we still have, we had decided we were waiting for comments from PMS. And I'd like to see where they're coming from, what their thoughts are. I don't know, Mark. I know Philip suggested that maybe looking at that early next, next month, maybe something like that. So we can also look at as, as Dave pointed out too, we have the February 20th coming up. Maybe we can do, and there again, we don't want to spend a lot of time digging deep into some discussions because we could eat up the whole advance just talking about two or three things. But there would be another opportunity. But I would be happy if you wanted to make a motion that we get it on the agenda. We could sure do that.
Okay, um, so could we designate a short amount of time at the strategic planning? Would that be okay? Or Philip, do you think that would, is a two-pact or would that be a good place to start?
I think it'd be a good place to start. We have five, roughly five hours at that, so when a carve, the board wants to carve out time there, they certainly can.
I'd be, I mean, if that's, is with Mayor, would that work for you or, or would other board members be okay with that? Giving one hour of that to discuss short-term rentals or, Norm, do you, would you be okay with that?
I guess.
I would be, I would be concerned. I guess it would depend how the meeting's going, but I'd be concerned to devote that much time all at that one time in that meeting, I guess.
So a separate meeting or?
Well, it's.
Agenda?
We could definitely bring it up and, and touch on it. And then if we decide, maybe at that point in time, then we could move forward from there. Does that make sense?
You know what? How about I'll make a motion for an agenda item if that works and then if, if it doesn't happen before then, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's see if this, would you like a motion now or does it have to be done in trustee staff?
Do a motion to have us look at getting it on the agenda.
Okay, um, make a motion to add short-term rental discussion as an agenda item in the next, by the end of February? Is that okay?
Okay. We have a motion on the table?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Swisher? Further discussion? We have a motion to second. Let's do roll call vote, please.
Eckstein, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yeah.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Volpe.
Yes.
Okay, I will be in contact then with the town administrator and we'll look at a slot. Let's, we can see what comes up, Amy, in the advance. And then see how much further we want to take it, if that works, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Norm, what do you got? Did we lose Norm again? Cindy?
Um, I attended my first water advisory board meeting and it was very interesting. I'll need Sean's help on this one. We have really valuable employees and Sean, and I believe his name is Alan, I didn't write it down and so I don't know. And the expertise of the people that are on the advisory board, I just think it was very good. That's it.
Thank you, Cindy. Michelle, do you have anything? You're all good?
I'm good.
Great. Paula, do you have something for us?
Nothing.
All righty, thank you. Philip, anything else?
Uh, yeah, just, I guess I do need some direction for an agenda item on STRs. Is there anything that's needed from staff?
Not at this point, no. I believe we had, you had put, I had gotten some information prior. We'll make that available. I won't go any further than that at that point. Possibly, you know, what we could do is put that together. You and I will talk. We'll put that together maybe for the advance. Just as information.
Does a trustee ever led, does a trustee ever lead agenda items, Mayor?
It takes, basically according to what I understand, Jeff, I've read two trustees can, oh, you mean lead an agenda item?
Yeah, because I don't think we need anything from staff. That's right. It's more of just a conversation to figure kind of where everyone's at, but. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right. If it's going to be a meeting, there will have to be minutes made, correct, Jeff?
That's right.
Okay, so there would have to be staff attending to do minutes. You know, always being that's your, let's say, subject, you could lead the conversation, yes. If that's what you're asking. Okay, Norm, you got something?
Internet problems.
I know, you're bouncing in and out, but you're doing all right.
It's weird.
Joel, do you have anything?
You're coming up later.
You're coming up, right? You're coming up. Okay, so thank you very much. The time is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Jeff, I would entertain a motion to go into exec, executive session. An executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Paragraph 4, Subparagraph E, concerning the potential acquisition of water rights. May I have a motion?
Phil moved.
Thank you, Dave.
Second.
Second row. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we are going into executive session. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, everybody. Philip, who all is going to be here?